Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone with us in council chambers this evening, as well as those that are joining us via Zoom. Before we move into our agenda adoption, Rob, I believe we have one thing we need to switch.
Yeah, Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask council to amend the agenda 8A to include a potential purchase of real property.
So that's under closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Your motion?
Motion to adopt or change.
Is there a second? All in favor? Me opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. So with that, is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as adjusted? Message on the floor. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Motion is carried. At this time, we'll have Councilman Bevman lead us in our indication this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day you've given us today. And Lord just asked you be with us this evening. Or we, we thank you for the veterans that have served us and continue to serve us in our community to keep us safe and to keep us free. We're just ask you bless our time this evening. Give us wisdom and guidance as we discuss town matters. And Lord, just may you receive all glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. First up this evening, we do have one special presentation. It is our audit presentation. I believe Brian will be leading that this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
All right. So first I will introduce Carrie Dunlap, who is a senior audit manager with Martin Starnes and Associates. And she was over our audit this year. So she'll give a little recap of the audit process and how things went. And then I'll follow back up with some of our financial results and metrics for the year. So Carrie, I'll let you take it from here. And you can get the presentation queued up for her, please.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you, Carrie.
It's my pleasure to be here virtually with you this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to talk about the audit process. We very much appreciate having you guys as clients. And so I will talk about the audit process if you want to go to the next slide. So it begins with planning and risk assessment each year. And we really, we read through the council minutes. So we kind of know what's going on as far as if you have any new grants, any new debt. And from there, we create our audit process and we update our risk assessment. So we can tailor our audit procedures to anything that may be different from year to year. And so that is an ongoing part of the audit process throughout the engagement. So then comes the interim procedures. And that's typically in late spring, early summer, where we start our internal control testing. We do any tests of compliance that's coming up. And then we test any cash collection points. And that's where we start with our interim field work. And then for final field work is late summer. And that's where we analyze all the financial statement analysis. We tie all the general ledger balances to the source documents and follow up on any internal control and compliance testing from interim. From there, we issue our opinion letters. And those go in combination with the financial statements that are drafted by Brian. And then once all of that is wrapped up and complete, which this makes it sound way shorter and easier than it actually is. I'm sure Brian can attest to that. But once we get everything in the audit report, we submit that to the LGC. And then, once we have LGC approval, then it just starts again. So it's a year on process. We're already starting the planning and risk assessment stages for next year. So once the audit contract's final, all of that will just continue. It's an ongoing cycle. So the audit summary, it was an unmodified opinion, which was a clean opinion. That is the goal of the audit. It means there's no reason to think there are any material misstatements. The staff was fully prepared and cooperative. And I can't stress enough how important that is and how much smoother things go whenever we have someone like Brian to work with. So we very much appreciate him and the other staff that are in finance. And I also want to draw your attention to, if you have your audit report, the management's discussion and analysis at the beginning, that's the best place to look and just get a great overview of what's to come, especially for the fiscal year 24 budget, which I'm sure he's going to go into more detail of all the fund numbers. So I won't take that away from him. But on the next slide, the LGC wants us to present the fund balance available as a percent of expenditures net of Powell bill. So this, you can see back in '21, it was 34%. And then the past two years, it's been right at 29%. The minimum for this is 25%. So you're above the minimum. No concerns there. A median of other similar units is 46%, but that can swing heavily depending on what the goals are of the town. So no concerns with that. And then on the next slide, some other general performance indicators to share. There were no red flags. That's great news. The timely audit submission, it was early, stable property tax valuation and collection percent. So there are absolutely no, there's no bad news to share. So I'm happy to share that with you. And Brian, can you think of anything else? Or does anyone have any questions for me?
Nothing for me, but we'll, we'll hold on as well. And if you come up with any questions, we'll both be available after as well.
She mentioned the percent we hold back. It used to be 20. When did it move up to 25? I know we've always been ahead of it, but...
Yeah, we have our own fund balance policy. I'm not sure when, when that threshold moved up to 25. I know that the minimum that the state recommends is 8% for fund balance expenditures. But Carrie, do you have anything further on that?
Yeah, they kind of changed. So the 8% would be like, they would send a letter because that's very, you, that's saying you have less than two months. If something were to happen, you know, you couldn't continue for two months. So they've changed that minimum. They've bumped that up to 25%. And that's just taking into consideration other municipalities of your like size. So they kind of updated that just as a better measure to use as a guide versus just saying like 8%, you know, two months minimum. But yeah, there's the minimum threshold 25%. That's, I wouldn't be alarmed that you're at 29% by any means. It's just, it's a more accurate guideline to use.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, I just want to thank Carrie as well for her partnership through the audit. It's, it's really important to us not to just have an auditor that swings by and does the audit once or twice a year, but somebody that we can really bounce ideas off of, discuss all the new topics that are coming our way, all the new requirements and guidelines. And so Martin Starnes and Carrie are really great. They have a great reach around the state and have interaction with a lot of municipalities that they can then bring value to us as well. So they're a great partner and just want to thank them for their help through this, this process again. So now I'll go into some of the significant impacts for the year, for the town, for fiscal year 2023. We purchased the largest, most expensive fire truck that the town has ever purchased at $1.35 million. And you can see the truck there in the July 4th parade that we had this year. We also constructed water and sewer lines throughout the town, either constructed or rehabbed to the tune of about a million dollars. We also received contributions of infrastructure from developers totaling over $11 million. And this is something that doesn't flow through the budget. It's not something that the residents have to fund themselves or comes from any source of revenue for the town. So this is revenue that comes in, it's not revenue, I'm sorry, it's contributed capital. It's the infrastructure, the streets, sidewalks, water and sewer lines, stormwater infrastructure that comes along with new development that the town doesn't have to pay for. So this is a really impressive number for this year and brings a lot of value to the town that we don't have to spend our tax dollars on. The town also saved about $7.3 million in transfers to the capital reserve fund. And that was a result of a couple of our revenue increases that we saw this year. Property tax increased by about 29% or $3 million from the prior year. Intergovernmental taxes, which includes sales taxes, franchise and utilities taxes, were up about 10% or just under half a million dollars. And the water, sewer and stormwater funds increased by about 12% or $1.25 billion. So this graph here shows government-wide net position. And so this is equity for a private business. And that is broken down into three different classes of net position. Restricted, which has some sort of external restriction on it, such as our Powell bill funds that can only be used to improve streets. So those have an external restriction from the state. We have unrestricted net position, which we are free to use for any purpose in the following year. And then the largest portion of our net position is our net investment capital assets, which is the value of the town's capital assets less the debt that we owe on those. And so that's up to about 70 million. So you can see here that our total net position over the last five years has increased from about 60 million up to about 105. And in gold here, you can see that our capital, our net investment in capital has increased from about 40 to 70. And our net investment in capital this year at 70 is greater than the town's total net position from 2019. So just the value of our infrastructure, our buildings, all of our large assets in town are greater than the total value of the town from just five years ago. So you can see that we've had a lot of growth and a lot of contributed capital. So how was the investment in capital assets made this year? What was that split? You can see that about 10% of our investment was in land or land improvements, 12% in vehicles, buildings at three, heavy equipment at 2%. And then our largest is infrastructure, as you would expect. Our water, sewer and our streets contributed about 73% of what we invested in capital assets this year. So this chart shows you our government-wide operations. So this is the general fund and the water and sewer and stormwater fund. This is all funds for the town. You can see that revenues reached about $48 million this year with a pretty exponential growth from 2019, which we like to see there, especially because expenses have stayed really linear. So expenses starting at about 20 and making its way up to about $28 million this year, where revenues were, were at about 27 and are up to about 48 this year. So a really healthy chart there for the operations of the town as a whole. So now moving into the general fund, the same, same chart showing you revenues and expenditures, you can see pretty linear growth there for the general fund, going from about 15 million in 2019 up to about 24 million in this past year. And expenses stay a lot closer to revenues just within the general fund. I do want to point out that the expenditure number here includes the transfers to the capital reserve fund. So what you can't see in this chart is how much we're saving each year beyond the difference between revenues and expenses there. And, and that was pretty substantial this year at about $6 million in the general fund. So the same chart for water and sewer operations, revenues at 12.6 million has grown pretty nicely over the past couple of years and expenditures of about 10.8 million. Again, transfers to the capital reserve are included in here. But you can see that the water and sewer fund has a pretty healthy net operating margin there. Stormwater fund is a little bit less stable year to year. It has, it's a much smaller fund. So when something big happens, it's more impactful to the numbers here. As you can see with revenue, there were some contributed capital in 2019 and 20 that, that brought that number up. But operations revenue has gone from about 600 to 700 over this chart. And that's very stable because it is just based on the number of homes and equivalent businesses in town. So that stays very linear. Total expenses along the same lines at about 550,000 this year. And so you can see that this fund is really intended to save up money every year and then put it towards a big stormwater capital project. And so that's what you can see is happening here. So grant funding across the town. The town received Powell bill funds of about 556,000. Those are distributed by the state and that's based on the street miles in town and our population. We ended the year with about 85,000 left in Powell bill cash reserves that we will put towards future projects when those times come up. We received our second and final installment of ARPA funds at just over $2.6 million to put us at about 5.3 million on the total grant. So we have received all that. We've appropriated a good portion of it, but we have about a million left to appropriate within the next year. So we have another category of grants here. And these are grants that were awarded but not received. And this is what makes this a record-breaking year as well for the town, that we received about 14 million in these transportation grants that, that you will start to see movement on, on Highway 49 corridor improvements, Caldwell Road extension and the Hickory Ridge sidewalk project for a total of investment of about 17 million. And then a couple of other grants awarded but not received are the water asset inventory assessment, as well as the sewer asset inventory assessment for about $500,000. And those are, those are projects that we would have done anyways. We had in our budget, we were planning to do those. So getting these grant funds, it just really helps out the town and the fund in general, accomplish something that we already had scheduled and planned. Okay, so now we'll get into some of the metrics. The LGC puts these metrics out for the, across the entire state, for everyone to analyze and compare against the rest of the state, other municipalities your size. So here, our group-weighted average that you'll see on the next couple of charts are for municipalities with less than 25,000 population that do not have an electric fund, because that makes such a big difference to the setup of your town. So available fund balance again is all the fund balance in the general fund that's available for any use, so it's not restricted for any purpose. And what, what the LGC likes to do is compare that to your expenditures in the current year. So for an easy example, if you spent $12 million this year on operations and you have a million dollars in your reserve, then you have one month of savings that you can put towards your operations next year to keep your operations completely normal if, if you were to have lost all of your funding. So it is a very important number that if you have unpredictable things happen to your revenue, that you've got a savings account that can carry forward operations for a number of months before you run into issues. And so the black line at the bottom is that 8% minimum that we've mentioned. Harrisburg is in the middle hovering right around 29% over the last several years. And you can see the group and state average have worked their way up above 60%. So one thing that we have that a lot of other municipalities do not have, not saying that they all don't, but many don't, is our capital reserve fund. So our fund balance policy says that anything over 40% of a slightly different calculation than, than this one here gets moved over to the capital reserve to fund our future projects. And so if you add that balance, which is about $12 million at the end of the year, into this calculation, then that, our little 50th emblem up there shows you where we would be if we were to kind of compare apples to apples with the rest of these municipalities. So we're up at about 85%, which means if we were to lose funding for almost an entire year, we could still carry on operations as if everything were normal. So I think that's a really healthy number for us and a really positive thing to point out. The water and sewer fund has a couple ratios and benchmarks that the LGC likes to look at. And one is the operating margin. This is a fund that needs to be self-sustaining. It can't depend on tax dollars. It needs to depend fully on the revenues that come from water and sewer services. And so it needs to be self-sufficient. And so what you can see here is that the operating margin for the town has been in between the group and the state average or thereabouts for the last five or so years, kind of in that 15 to 20% range. We did drop this year down to about 13%, but we made a really big investment in smart meters and about $500,000 in smart meters this year that we haven't done in prior years. And so without that investment in smart meters, which I wouldn't really, I wouldn't say should impact your operating margin because it's a one-off thing, it's something we could stop if we needed to. We would be at about 18%, so right there in line with our state average. And I would expect both of the state and group averages to dip with us as well as cost have really risen in the utility area. Operating revenues per capita on this chart. So this is, what, what does the average household pay in water and sewer charges on an annual basis? So the group and state average there in red and yellow have been increasing at about 5% to 6% a year. And so they're both over $550. And Harrisburg has been right in line with that same growth, but did go up to about 580 this year. And so what that equates to is about $48 a month for water and sewer service for the homes in Harrisburg. So, so right in line with our group and state average, I would expect, just like on the last chart, that those will go up for 2023 once all the audits are submitted and we see those calculations. But, but 580 per person. And one thing I want to point out is council in 2019 adopted the 5% rate resolution. And so you can kind of see the impact of that over the last four years. So another good thing to look at that means something to everyone who might be listening or watching is the tax rate for Harrisburg. You can see here, the Harrisburg has always been a low-tax community at about 35 and a half cents since 2019. The state and group average has been around 45 cents and dropped to about 43 as of last year. And we had the eight cent tax increase that was applied to this fiscal year with six cents of that being dedicated to the expanded law enforcement division and two cents to go to save for future capital projects. So as we saw earlier with the big capital reserve savings number, you can see the effect of that tax increase going to, to fill that reserve so that we have funds available to jump on the grant projects for transportation or some of the other big initiatives that we have over the next several years. So you can see the effect of that tax increase. But that increase brought us right in line with the state and our group. Now we'll take a look at revenue and expenditures across the town. Breaking those into some categories here. You can see that revenue across the entire town, utilities at 28% and property tax at 28%. So those make up more than half of all the revenue that, that we receive. Sales tax at 9%. Want to jump over to sales, services and intergovernmental. Sales tax is usually included in intergovernmental revenues, but it's such a large portion here that I feel like it's worth breaking out and showing that almost 10% of our funding comes from sales taxes, which come from around the state and around the county. So not necessarily spent by Harrisburg residents. Sales and services is mostly made up of parks and recreation programs and athletics. And then contributions at 23%. And that is the contributed capital from developers. So that is not, that's not dollars that are coming in. That is assets that are helping the town grow its infrastructure. So still looking at the entire town expenditure analysis, water and sewers at 39% of all funds spent by the town, 26% to public safety, parks and rec and public works are at 13 and 14%. The general government at 7% to support all of these other functions of the town and then stormwater at 1%. And you can see last year's number for a comparison of how those may have grown or decreased. So we can zoom out one more time and combine all the town expenditures, but break it down into objects. So the four objects that we have are operations and maintenance at 43%, personnel at 37, and then capital outlay and debt. You know, debt is really just paying for capital in a, in a year after you've purchased it. So about 20% of our expenditures go to capital when you consider that. And then lastly, I just want to provide some growth numbers across the town to show you what's really contributing to some of the, the financial performance of the town and some of the projects and initiatives that we have. Population has grown by 18% over the last five years. The number of homes in Harrisburg is up 16%. And this is a pretty staggering number, but the property value, it has increased by 37%. And we are three years outdated with that property value. As we enter the county evaluation next year, I think we'll see a very staggering number for property valuations next year. And then of course, employees has increased by about 24% over that same period. So with that, our, our audit is concluded and we will begin the next audit within weeks. But, but we're glad to answer any questions. And Carrie's still here if you have any questions for her as well.
So Brian, when I was looking and the, I didn't see it, but I know it's hidden. Can you give me that dollar figure for the sales tax? She said for 2023, it was 9%. For 2022, it was 10%.
I think it was $3.6 million that we got in sales tax.
For 2023.
For 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if I'm, if I'm way off on that, I'll email everyone a correction because I see you writing down.
Any other questions for Brian?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to congratulate Brian and thank him and Carrie and our entire staff. I think the culmination of the, of the audit process is, is both a relief, but also an opportunity for us to kind of brag a little bit on how well our staff does in regards to finance and just operations in general. I've been here for every year that's on Brian's chart there. I think it started at 2018 and, and many people appear have as well. And what I've seen in my entire time here is the town get incrementally better, get incrementally more efficient and position ourselves to take advantage of a lot of the things that other communities we've, we've long looked at and said, why aren't we doing that? Right? So, you know, a lot of that goes back to Brian, you know, currently running a really good finance department. But previous to that, Lee, you know, establishing all of these procedures are, capital reserve fund is not something everyone has. And you know, Brian mentioned it earlier, but that was a, really a brainchild of Lee's. There was a time here not too long ago where we didn't have any capital. We couldn't pave streets. We couldn't build anything. We couldn't match a grant. So this was a way for us to reserve funds specifically to use for capital expenditures. So, you know, a couple of things I wanted to point out there is that, you know, I think this is obviously a, you know, a record year for us to save on that capital, but it also was not unanticipated. These are expenses that, you know, we've looked out into the future and said, we don't want to raise taxes later. This is how you do it now, is that you save today for those purchases of tomorrow. That $15 million worth of grant funding that, that Brian talked about, well, that comes with $3 million of matching bucks. All right, so if we, if we don't find ways to be more efficient, to, to get these savings, to build a better mousetrap, we couldn't take advantage of those opportunities. So I'm proud of the staff, certainly proud of Brian. Proud of the foresight that Lee has had over the years to build us into the financial powerhouse that we are today and look forward to continuing that into the future. There were a couple items on there that Brian and I went over the presentation. I figured Mike raised some eyebrows here. So I at least wanted to talk about them. And that was the water and sewer expense per household and the household cost. And one of the things I wanted to point out this year, you saw that uptick. Everything else kind of laid flat, right? But when we got to our water rates, they upticked and the house upticked. This was a, a major year for investment in loss act rates. We had to build the, the plant expansion. We assumed almost $350,000 worth of manual debt as part of that. So that's, that's sort of that cost aspect on our end where you see an uptick significantly where it just kind of floats along. And then this year, you see an uptick as well as the household cost. A lot of that is just passed over to our customers in the form of rates. But also that smart meter program, we've seen a little uptick in accurate meters. A lot of water loss that we had previously is now being captured. So I think both of those show up in that chart and they look a little different than every other chart. And when I first saw the chart, I said, oh, what is that? And so we had that conversation and I figured I answered that question before Rodney asked it.
Rob, with regards to your, your statement about over the previous years, I will ask, and I haven't had a chance to digest all of this. In previous years, our policies and procedures have rose some red flags. It never failed us, but we did have times that certain things would come through and was not the best procedure or process to have. How are we looking today versus where we were in the past? I mean, do they fully go through all of our processing procedures with regards to what we're doing with expenditures? And how's that look comparatively from the past?
They do. And obviously, you know, I'm a little biased, right? I'm, I'm in charge of our policies and procedures. So, you know, I feel very confident in them. We have two CPAs on staff here that, you know, don't just answer to me. They answer to their licenser board. But I think the most important, you know, person to ask that is, is your independent auditor, right? That's what that, that, those statements that go out to each of you and to me and, and to have these, you know, third-party auditors come in and look at everything and not just look at what you're spending, but what are your controls? Right? You know, how do we make sure that there isn't fraud, abuse, waste? And, you know, that's what Carrie and the folks there do. And they do an excellent job at it.
Carrie, so?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, I agree. There's, we had no issues to report. If we did, we would absolutely report those as far as internal controls not being followed. Obviously, we don't test every single transaction, every single invoice that comes through the town. We look at certain size invoices, depending on the function and certain compliance testing. So there are things. So there are things that might go under the radar from the town abuse perspective that wouldn't be detected by the audit. However, um I have nothing to report as far as any of the things that we did look at. And we can talk about that in more detail if we want to. I know Brian and I have also discussed this as well. So it's just an ongoing thing to always keep at the front of your mind because yes, that's something that um always needs to be addressed. And make sure that the policies are being followed.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions for Brian or Carrie?
I just want to note that um, looking at the years that, you know, it includes someone uncertain years. You know, we've gone through COVID, there's been, you know, a couple, two, three years of that, then with inflation last year, this year. And I think looking at the numbers that they're so stable and there's growth, I think that speaks to the fact that. You guys had, you know, your house in order, like things were good and you were prepared for whatever uncertainty happens. And even with uncertainty like that, it's been um pretty good for the town.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, thank you Brian, appreciate it.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you, Carrie. We will move into the public comment portion of this evening. Anyone wishing to address town council may do so during this section. Please state your name and address for the record, be courteous and please do not repeat those that have already, those comments that have already been said. Um, I will go to those that signed up in person and then once that is completed, I will go to anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak. We do have two gentlemen here with us this evening, uh Ron Lewis and Mr. Skeeter Streeter will come up and speak this evening.
Good evening. And thank you for allowing us to be here. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, thank you very much, members, uh senators and attorney, we appreciate your, your time. I'm David Streeter and this is my friend and con uh colleague, Ron Lewis. We represent uh Foundation Forward, Charters of Freedom. We're the nonprofit educational organization that installed the Charters of Freedom and the Veterans Park uh down by where Publix is located. And uh I would like to say that uh we have evolved as society has evolved. And Mr. Lewis will explain that to you in just a moment. And then I will finish up with a couple of comments uh and requests at the very end. But on a personal note, I'd like to say I feel pretty close to home. Uh, having been born in Stanley County and then years later returning and graduating from the old Fife for College. Uh, my wife being also a graduate with the Comerish Memorial Hospital of Nursing, notice I didn't use the new name that they go by now. And I also during the summers attended some classes, there's a, there's a little university three or four miles. I could never remember the name of it, but uh also I attended some classes there. Uh, but anyway, now I'm going to turn it over to uh Mr. Lewis and he's going to tell you a little bit about how we have evolved. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, uh Management Team, it's a pleasure to be with you. I'm surprised that Dr. Striger let me speak because you know PhDs get paid by the word. So um, but anyway, we, we're a good team and and it's been fun working with David for the last uh six, seven years. As David said, we're the organization that built the Charters of Freedom. And we're very proud of that. Last week, last Monday night, to be exact, we dedicated number fifty-one across the country. There are twenty-six dedicated in North Carolina. Our goal is to do all hundred counties in North Carolina. And uh we have a ways to go. I want to say emphatically that about three years ago, we discovered that we had a problem. We haven't completed the circle that makes this country so great. But David and I were making a presentation in Union County and there was a young black African American on the board. And he said to me, Mr. Lewis, you did a great job on your presentation, but you didn't do a thing for me. So we went back and put our heads together and solved that problem. And we, um, we're proud to, to gift to Harrisburg tonight. What is known as the Civil Rights Amendments. That's the thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, nineteenth and twenty-fourth amendments. They make us all the same. Regardless of, of your gender. Or the color of your skin, we're all the same. Because our founding fathers were smart enough to put language within the Constitution. It allows it to be amended as society changed. About six months after we introduced the Civil Rights Amendments, David and I went back to Monroe to do a follow-up presentation. The young council member who had questioned us that night, once he saw the Civil Rights Amendments, had tears running down his cheeks. So we felt very confidently that we had accomplished our goal. And what he was so boldly trying to tell us that night. Oh, when Thomas Jefferson and James Madison went to Philadelphia to work on the Constitution. The original Virginia papers that they took with them had the abolishment of slavery within the Virginia Papers. When they arrived in Philadelphia, it didn't take long to realize that they didn't have the votes to do that. But they were smart enough to put language within that, that great document that allows it to be amended. So Mayor and Council, um, we're proud to present to you tonight this gift of the Civil Rights Amendments. It is a comparable document to what you have down the street here and it completes the circle. It makes us all the same under the United States Constitution. Before I turn it back over to Dr. Streeter who gets paid by the word, I'm an, I'm an old county manager. Longer than I want to admit, but I want to congratulate you, Mayor, the Council and Stan. For an incredible audit report. Now, as a visitor, I can say that. And as a finance director, there has to be some level of modesty as he makes his presentation to you. But I don't have to exercise that modesty. I thought you had an amazing audit report. And, and you're all to be commended and very proud of that. Do you have any questions to me before I turn it back over to David Streeter? Okay, David finished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I'll be very brief. I have two requests. Number one is that uh when you accept this document. Please pass it around throughout all the departments within the town. And take a little time to explain to them what it is and Foundation Forward gifting this to the town. If you would like some assistance in doing that, please feel free to contact me. It's a short drive from Morganton where Ron and I both live to come down. Uh, and I will be more than happy and Ron, if he can assist me in uh presenting this to some of your departments. And uh then we would request that you hang it in an appropriate place. So that it can also be viewed uh and explained to people that it is a continuation and a part of the Charters of Freedom. My other request is we work very closely with the media and that I write a monthly article. That is, has been very well received, that's uh a religious, a political with the local media. And if you uh at some time know someone, then you can make a warm introduction to me as opposed to a cold call. I would appreciate that very much.
Wonderful. Thank you both gentlemen so much for being here and presenting that this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was all that we had signed up. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak during public comments this evening before I move to online? Okay, is there anyone joining us online that would like to speak during public comments? Okay, there is no one. Meeting right along, is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the motion is carried. Communications, we will start with our town manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Staff and a handful of residents out there. Uh, first I wanted to, and I know the gentleman uh had to leave and, and, and walked out here. And I know it's kind of uh tough getting schedules. Um, for those that aren't aware, we, the, the rest of the Charters of Freedom are in Veterans Park. So if you guys haven't had the opportunity um to view those, you know, please do. But they include our, our founding documents, just like you would see in Washington DC and they're displayed similar um here in Harrisburg. As we display them in the nation's capital. And our intent would be on our next uh renovation, which Jim and I have already talked about. You know, the, the uh charters that we installed a couple of years ago have some paint issues and things. Is uh to incorporate the um Civil Rights Amendments into that. So um again, I know they left, but I appreciate the gift and we'll certainly um educate our staff onto the charters that we currently have. As well as the addition because that's much appreciated. The second thing I had was um, you know, uh, breaking news, we had an election, right? So uh I wanted to uh congratulate uh, you know, Christopher Paul, who's uh in the audience. Uh, for his successful campaign as well as uh Latricia Glover, who will be the two newest council people. Um, starting in December, so uh congratulations. And I do look forward to onboarding uh both council people and uh getting everybody up to speed with all the cool stuff that we have going on. Um, in that budget uh audit report that Brian just showed. On the flip side of that, um, you know, I've been in um local government since two thousand and seven. Um, in, in government in general, um, for twenty years back to two thousand and three. And um one consistent thing in life, but certainly in, in this arena is uh the only thing that's consistent is change.
Right.
Right, so um, two years ago, we were fortunate to get uh three new people up here. That uh have assimilated to be part of the team. Um, and, and that's been a blessing to us. This year will be, you know, seeing off uh Councilman Patrick, Councilman Russo, who I've had the opportunity again over seven years. With Councilman Russo and, and four years with Councilman Patrick. And um, you know, although I've been in, in your guys' seats. So I know the joy of not having uh to do it after you've carried that water for so long, um, I'll be sad. So uh, um, I've had the opportunity to uh, you know, work with Councilman Russo. We, we've uh um shared some uh conversations in the Penn State Room. I've had the Italian sausage and peppers. We've used some pretty colorful language uh towards each other at times. And uh, you know, thank you for serving and uh I appreciate it and don't be a stranger. And for Councilman Patrick, you know, i- if anybody here has made me a better manager, it's been you. He, you know, I think uh, when I think of council and I think of accountability, I, I certainly um know that I get nothing by you. Uh, there's not a, a typo that gets across uh the email. There's not a uh signature that gets missed that you don't find. Um, so you know, I wanted to mention that to Ron back when we talked about our, our controls and I'm like, well, Ian's our controls for sure. So um, and you know, I've had the opportunity at the Fourth of July to hold your daughter while you go on stage. You know, I fucked your wife, so there are personal um connections here that aren't easy to let go. Um, but I appreciate the time that both you gentlemen have spent and I'll certainly miss both of you. Thank you. Other than that, I was going to leave that uh as all of my updates unless you guys have any questions for me this evening.
Next up, we have our finance method report, so Brian gets to come back up.
May get to follow the heartfelt message. Well, that's easy.
It's what you get.
All right, so I will keep this uh brief as we've already had one finance report tonight. But looking at the revenue and expense dashboard, uh at the conclusion of the month of October. You can see tax collections up about four percent to seventeen percent. Uh, which supports the majority of the general fund revenues, which are up to about twenty-four percent. Of course, over the next two months or so, we will really see those numbers increase as those property tax distributions are made um from the county. The Water and Sewer Fund is at thirty-four percent and Stormwater Fund at thirty-three percent. So all revenue is on track as expected right now. Departmental expenditures across the general government departments are all in green or within five percent of its target of thirty-three percent. So no concerns there. And the same message across all departments of the town to finish out the general fund and both enterprise funds. Uh, all departments are in the green or within that acceptable five percent. Uh, so no, no comments on any, any of the departments there. Salaries across the town at thirty-one percent of eight percent this month. So this is a look at our single year capital projects. And I know s- some of these are difficult to see, but we'll highlight uh the ones that we'll comment on tonight. So street resurfacing with Powell Bill, um, that project's been moved to complete. That paving was done in Sequoia Hills, Rocky River Crossing, School Avenue and within town center. And those were completed this past month and finishes are paving for the entire fiscal year under the Powell Bill program. Also, our Orchard Park Pump Station upgrades were completed. Um, that project um included the installation of a bypass pump and a wet well coating to really revive that. Um, that pump station there. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are in design. Had a little movement on the two federally funded grant projects. Those RFPs have been approved by NCDNT and those proposals will be, will be due back this month. So we'll start to see some movement, those uh really impactful projects there. This is a look at our multi-year projects that are under construction. Uh, the sidewalks along Stallings Road for Phase One are moved up to about five percent complete. And that work um should begin this week on those sidewalks, so it would be good to see that out there. This is a look at all of our equipment projects for the year. The first one that was moved to complete for the month was the backup and disaster recovery replacement in IT. Um, that device is in place, fully configured and is replicating to the cloud as we speak. The next is the advanced training mannequin um for our deputies. And the fire department will also share in the use of this, some of their training that was received and is ready to be used. And lastly, the batting cages at Stallings Park are fully installed and ready to be used as well. Here's a look at all of our vehicle projects. We're starting to see a little bit more movement on vehicles in general. So we have a couple to highlight here. The replacement inspector truck in the engineering department has been received and is getting its outfit items. And will be placed in service very soon. And along the same lines is the replacement F-two-fifty for Parks and Rec, um, same, it's been received and will be placed in service very soon. And professional services projects, the first one of note here is a strategic economic development plan. The background research and analysis of our economic conditions has been completed. And so the consultants are now developing the plan's uh ultimate framework. And then we have three plans here that all had a little bit of progress. The Parks Master Plan, the Water Model Update and the CIP Engineering Services for Water and Sewer. All three of those projects consultants are gathering data currently. And so we consider those to be in the discovery phase of um their timeline. And other things going on in finance for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the current fiscal year. We have just held first quarter budget meetings with each department. Those went really well, as you can see from uh, from the dashboard. There's no spending concerns there. And for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, which is amazing to say that that's already coming up upon us. Um, personnel and capital planning is underway as we'll hold some meetings this month and into December. To get those plans together to provide to you as we kick off budget season. And then as always, our ARPA funds, um, with interest earned, we're up to almost five point five million dollars. Which means we're just shy of about a million left to appropriate within the next year. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Brian? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our step, we have our law enforcement update. Captain Meesmer will give that this evening.
Mayor, Council?
Good evening.
October updates, our law enforcement related activities was three thousand fourteen. October updates, our law enforcement related activities was 3,014. Security checks was 1,901, traffic stops 543. And now all that was done with a non-emergency time, meaning no blue lights, no siren of seven minutes and three seconds. Mine is going to be a quickie tonight. The one thing I did want to make sure we bring up is the Labor Day weekend update. The press release should be going out tomorrow morning. Hopefully it keeps getting delayed because everybody's getting COVID. Kind of run around the agency a little bit. We do have three in custody. Two more will be this imminent. It's going to happen. Two more are going to be arrested here in the near future for a total of five arrests made on that night. That's the night that we saw out toward the Bears Woods, which is not in Harrisburg, but it joins many of our neighborhoods where several shootings took place in occupied dwellings. What we believe happened that night is the Bojangles on Rocky River, not the Bojangles on 49. So folks, please don't run to 49 and blast that manager. The one on Rocky River has been allowing kids to hang out there after hours inside the store. Two conflicting gang groups ended up there one night. A robbery occurred where they robbed a, one of the suspects, some of them are juveniles, I have to be careful what I say, robbed them. The shooting was retaliation for that robbery. From there, then there was another retaliation. And then of course, retaliation on that retaliation. That is why we saw three different events that night. The main culprits are in custody. I know the question is going to be asked. Some are Charlotte residents, some are homegrown Harrisburg residents. And we have one that's more of a transient. He's in and out of state. It will take us a little while to track him down, but the warrants will be issued for him also. Any questions about this?
So when you say some were Charlotte, some were Harrisburg or this area, or was it, did it stem out of here or did it carry from?
It stemmed out of Harrisburg. I wished I could tell you different, but I know, I know why you bring that up. A lot of times folks thinks that, think that all our crimes come from Charlotte. It does not. We do have a fair amount that comes into Charlotte and we stop it at the line and we catch them heading back over the line. But unfortunately, sometimes we do have folks here in Cabarrus County that commit crimes. And this time's one of them. Several of them are juveniles, several of them are adults.
They're, are they still looking for the suspect from the Dollar Tree or has that been resolved?
That was not an armed robbery. That was another one of the ones where the forearm got that completely wrong. The clerk showed up, saw them shoplifting, they were stealing candy, excuse me, I guess that's me bumping this. Saw them stealing candy. She confronted them. They left the store without incident. Once they got outside and made it to their vehicle, they were leaving without causing her any problems. It was two males. For some reason, a female got out of the suspect vehicle, confronted the store clerk. They got into a verbal argument and then a fistfight. So it was not an armed robbery of any way, shape or form. It was more or less, it would have been shoplifting and then a assault. So they are still looking for that suspect. We know where the vehicle is. The vehicle had a fictitious tag. We've been able to track some of that car's movements. And I know the detectives are working on that, but at this point we have not made an arrest on that case.
Has the ATM been recovered from Labor Day event as well?
Yes, that person's in custody and I want to say $250,000 bond is what he's setting in with probably, if I recall right off the top of my head, it was 15 different felonies between us and surrounding counties. He was making a history of that. That case has been solved. He was put in custody two weeks ago, give or take three weeks ago.
And that was at the DMV, correct?
That was at the DMV.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our fire department update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Management.
Good evening.
I'm obviously not cheap. He was unable to be here tonight. So my name is Tim Wooten. For those of y'all that don't know me, I'm the Data and Planning Division Chief. I'm the one responsible for putting together this presentation for you. So. All right. So October was a super busy month for us for fire prevention. It is the National Fire Prevention Month. Normally this takes one slide. It took three to put it all on there. We had 15 separate like events for like big. But one of the notable things on this, on the first slide, we actually partnered with the Carreras County Fire Marshals Association or Fire Marshal's Office. And we were able to teach over 300 kids at one time, fire safety at the Harrisburg Library. So that was pretty, pretty impressive on that. That was the first time we were able to do that this year. Slide two, we had Girl Scouts. There were 10 Girl Scouts that actually received their first aid merit badges. We were able to assist with that. And then another notable thing on our third slide, I kind of wanted to total these up for you. So this year of the 15 events that we had, we reached 1,125 children with direct fire prevention program. We also received an astounding 9,900 kids in indirect programming, where we were at an event that they may have come and got to climb on our trucks. You know, we maybe gave them candy at a trick or treat. So just the ability to be able to reach that many people and maybe give them something that could potentially save their lives or something would be crucial. Also, we had 28 staff members of local churches that received active shooter response training as well. So it's a pretty big month for that. For the Fire Marshal's Office also, in addition to all of that, we were able to complete 18 pre-plan reviews. That lets us get into the local businesses prior to an emergency happening, update information, give our crews the layout of the buildings, maybe some potential hazards they could come across. So that was kind of critical on that. The next slide we've got is about the Fire Marshal or Fire Inspector activities. As you can see, 83% of our inspections are just the general fire inspections of a typical business that gets done annually. Of those inspection activities, there were 45 that were re-inspections. There were 32 new inspections. So we get questions asked a couple of times about what, I've had this question asked to me. What constitutes a re-inspection? If we go and find a fire violation, we don't just immediately give them a ticket. We actually wait and give them an opportunity to try to fix it. So our inspector will come back in a week or a month later and just check. So these re-inspections could have been spillovers from another month as well. So. Our monthly fire stats, we had 258 incidents. There were 389 unit responses that took 1,272 personnel to make that happen. Our turnout time, if you noticed this month, that's kind of a number I like to keep track of. That did tick up a little bit this month. It was 35 seconds last month. That's how fast we get on the truck and go to the call from being dispatched. That ticked up because we were at fire prevention activities and we had to make sure all the kids get off the trucks and were in a safe spot before we could get going. So that's kind of that, what that number was there. But our average dispatch arrival is still four and a half minutes-ish, which is really good, good on that. And as you can see, that, that, that box did tick up just a little bit from the average response time, just because of probably that turnout time a little bit. We did have four working fires in our district. Last month, two of them were house fires. One of them was a tractor trailer truck, yard tracker at a local business that caught on fire. 45% of the calls are still in Station One. It's obviously the busiest area where most people are at. We were able to handle 70% of the calls with only one unit going to it. So are close to 70%. Station One is Engine 31 and Ladder 31. They were still constantly the busiest area. It's obviously where most of the calls are. About half our calls are always going to be EMS. So that's kind of what this chart's just showing you on there. And 70% of the calls that were handled were handled only by Harrisburg with no assistance from outside units. And normally there's only usually like one or two days and it's really dark. So the monthly calendar shows, obviously there's a couple more. We're pretty busy a couple of days of the month. So. On this too, this, we're doing the map on site. We're working on trying to get a connector with some more information out of our CAD software that's going to actually let us put this on the map rather than being a graph off to the side. But currently, as you can see, all the H1s are Station One's areas and that equates to about 40% of the calls again. So that's, those are the busiest zones with 14, 15 and 12 being really high. And that's the center part, kind of downtown area of Harrisburg. So that's where most of the people kind of congregate. That's where we have the most calls. We also welcome two brand new employees. This past month, one of them we brought in as a captain, James Johnson. He is from us, from Bringsburg Fire Department, about 15 years experience plus. Came in as a captain. We onboarded him really quickly. He is doing great, getting his feet wet on that. He also coaches local football here as well. We also onboarded, he goes by Bob, Bob Brown. He is firefighter two. He's stationed out at Station Three and he is also a local resident of Harrisburg as well. Both of them live in Harrisburg. So that, that's pretty neat that we were able to get some local talent. And then we were at the trick or treat events and the 50th anniversary celebration and all that. So any questions?
Tim, it's really dry out there right now. Is there anything going on that the residents need to be aware of? And with burning leaves and stuff like that, because we don't have much rain.
Right. So we do not offer any, we don't have any open burning allowed at all within the town limits. That's a, that's actually ordinance from the Fire Marshal's Office. So they're not allowed to burn anything on the ground if you're a town resident. If you are outside the town, then you fall underneath the Cabarrus County rules. And Cabarrus County rules would be in the Fire Marshal's Office for Cabarrus County or the North Carolina Forestry Service. There is a statewide burn ban in place right now. You all have probably heard of some fires and stuff that's up in the mountains. I think they said they have about 6,000 acres in the state of North Carolina that's on fire right now. So we would obviously caution anyone. But one of the reasons we do not allow open burning is because we have a great public works department that has leaf sucker up trucks and debris picking up. So they have no need to really burn something. So we would obviously recommend that you don't burn anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Tim, you had, in one of your slides, and I was looking back, you mentioned the Station One, Station Two, Station Three.
Yep.
Station One remains busy. In that graph, does that also include when you guys are going for mutual assistance to say Concord and?
Yes. So if it's close to Station One's area, that Station One is handling the assistance with them, that is a Station One area call. Like it's going in that direction. When you look at the map that has all the different zones, those calls would fall underneath the Concord Zone versus the Harrisburg Zones.
So whether it be Flow Store or any of that stuff, that gets included in that original graph?
Right. In the Station One, Two and Three, the Flow Store would be like a Station Three, because they're obviously closer to that area. Even if Station Two and Station Three are going, it would be a Station Three call in that graph.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Just a few mayor's comments this evening. First, I would like to wish Councilwoman Kotel a very happy birthday today. Happy birthday. I will spare you from singing. Hope you had a great day. Just wanted to kind of recap the 50th celebration. For those who were able to attend, it was amazing. We received a lot of wonderful feedback from our residents that it felt very much like Harrisburg. Of course, July 4th is a fantastic event. Lots of people coming externally. This felt like you were having a party with your neighbors and friends and family. So thank you to our Parks and Rec and the committee that helped to put that on. Last week, or it might've been the week before, we had our quarterly summit in the county and we were able to hear from Dr. Kapiki, who is our Cabarrus County School Superintendent. Lots of good information came, came out of that meeting. And we really got to hear what his plan is over the next 10 years, mainly focusing on upfitting some of our more dated schools, as well as he's trying to lessen the amount of mobile units that we have at the schools, as well as building a couple of new schools. I cannot remember the, the number off the top of my head, but I think it was within the next six years, there are no seats left at our schools with the amount of growth that we're experiencing countywide. So he certainly has, excuse me, his work cut out for him. I would encourage you all to attend the community realignment meetings that are set up for our Harrisburg residents. He will be at Hickory Ridge on November 29th from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. That's Hickory Ridge High School. That is an opportunity for you to come and hear about the community realignment plan for our county that would affect really all of our schools. I would also like to thank HBN Parks and Rec Department and Gathering on Main for hosting a very successful Bags in the Burr Community Event that benefited our new Harrisburg YMCA. That was very well attended, lots of, of good community relations happening there. And I also wanted to make mention of something coming up this Saturday. Harrisburg's very own Caleb Foster is hosting a canned food drive and turkey giveaway from 12 to 2:00 PM at Hickory Ridge Middle School. Caleb attended Hickory Ridge Schools and he plays basketball for Duke University. So he is excited to get back to the community and give some, give back through part of his community outreach program. So that is all I have and we will move to council comments.
I'll jump out. So October was a crazy busy one. Most of you are familiar with our Harrisburg Cowboys. October, they did their annual pickup. This year, they decided to take it one step further. In the past, they've had the kids wear the pink armbands, pink socks and parents get into it. And this year, they decided to really go full-fledged and do a fundraiser. They were able to collect just that $1,500 to give to atrium breast cancer awareness and got the opportunity to present their check on TV to, with Queen City News present. So the kids, as you can imagine, were pretty pumped up. Been talking with some of the coaches. They have plans to do this ongoing for the future. I don't know how we can be involved. I know they are part of the parking rack, but I made my donations to them. And I would just encourage you guys next year, when they come around to help them out and know that it's all going to a good cause. At the same time, these, some of the teams, as you know, did very well this year. Unfortunately, one team that was very close, one step away from their making Orlando, had their dreams upset on Sunday, Saturday afternoon. Well, they did lose the nine-year team, but we got a great season. These kids outscored something like 300 to eight up until this past Saturday. So they're, they're a pretty amazing group of kids. Good to know. The mayor and I got to go out and present them with their city championship trophy. If you don't, if you haven't been out to a Saturday football game, it's great entertainment. Games only last an hour. So you're not there long. And no telling what you'll see. It's absolute mayhem sometimes. It's a good environment for everybody. So we'll, we go through October, we land into November. Throughout October, throughout November, we have election. And of course, you run into folks, you meet folks, you see folks. So here's my laundry list. Be ready.
Hang on, I need to get my pen.
Yeah, right. Autumn Drive. The question is, is can the hidden cameras be placed first? It used to be that Meesmer had, Captain Meesmer had cameras that could detect without flashing their speeds. So they really captured the true speed over there. I feel it would be less effective if it's a big, here's your speed type thing right now. They won't understand because they've lost dogs to cars coming through there. So several folks reached out the last few weeks that. Saying, and he shows up.
Did you hear that part?
It's like Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice, Beetlejuice. You show up. The, the question was Autumn Drive. A few folks have reached out. I feel like the speed's going through autumn a little bit higher than what they should be. The question was, is there, I thought we used to have cam, or radar that could capture without flashing speeds and?
We do. The signs will. The signs still are there and people see them, but we can't cut it off to where it doesn't flash speeds. It's called stealth mode. A lot of times when we get calls, people think that the batteries are dead and we, they aren't dead. We just want to see what happens once they think that the battery is dead.
I think that's what they were requesting.
Take care of that. Autumn Drive?
Yes. They, they had made comments that some had lost some pets over there due to cars rolling through. I just reported it back. I said, I'll let folks know when.
Yeah. I've received a call from Autumn about how school buses are going 80.
Minus the governor, right?
Yeah.
That's kicked at 50 or 55.
Really rolling. Get them little kids off.
They can't even do eighty down the interstate, much less.
Is that all you had for him?
Those, yeah, those capture speed prior to displaying, even when they are displaying.
If you can see the sign, the sign can see you. So a lot of folks think that as they get closer and it displays the sign that that's when it picked it up, it already picked you up as soon as you could see it.
Okay.
As long as there's a line of sight to it and it's not interfering with another radar unit that's gonna pick it up from a distance.
So do you feel like the numbers are pretty true what you're capturing instead of?
They normally are.
Okay.
Usually then we give out the eighty-five percentile, of course, you always have those outliers. But outliers honestly could be an EMS vehicle flying through a neighborhood to get to a call or could be us doing the same thing or just that one kid at three in the morning driving crazy. But that's why we just give out the eighty-five percentile because that's your average speeds.
That's all I had for you guys. Oh wait a minute, what was there? So we got emails about these signs from the from somebody trying to sell them to the town. So in your opinion, because we'll probably need this for budget, in your opinion, should should we look into having permanent flashing signs in problem locations within Harrisburg?
It would not hurt to have those signs, but I do believe people start to forget about them after they see them every day, all day. That's why we opted for the signs that were affordable to move them around throughout the town. And of course, we have a budget to maintain them. I do have an appetite for a larger sign that can sit on Highway forty-nine because our current signs will not last more than twelve hours without dying on a road that populated. It's just too many cars for the signs to keep it up, keep up, and that's not what it's designed for. Permanent radar signs do have some effect on people in school zones, et cetera. But there are folks that get tired of seeing them and they just start disregarding them. They just kind of fade into the background as you drop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh other issues that were mentioned, so um of course, we know Robinson Church will never be reopened. I've explained that until you're blue in the face and
Across the route.
Yeah, across railroad tracks. I mean, when you sit and think about how much traffic backed up previously, I couldn't imagine where that traffic would back up today if we ever tried to reopen that, but no. Um the other was an interesting suggestion. So the resident lives on Patricia. She had heard us discussing the parallel one way. And she said, let me offer you what I've seen Charlotte do. Whatever, and and Mallory, I look towards you for this, but I know we don't generally lean towards speed bumps. Their suggestion was that Charlotte is now going to a speed bump that is cut in half. It's the width, just under the width of the heavy vehicles such as the fire trucks and ambulances. And said, would that pose a better solution? And I said, the jury's still out what we're doing on parallel, you know, if we're doing anything at all. But I would certainly mention that I would bring this back and share with you guys what her suggestion was. So um if there's more information on that, you guys can let us know. The the last thing was if we could have potentially a feature on our website. Uh quite common, folks get lost on the website not understanding where to go see these grants and what roads are being improved and what um sidewalks are being created and what greenways are being worked on or being created as well. I mean, I know we have all these plans and I can go give you every link that we have. They're looking for more of a quick hit type, oh, because we talked about the greenway over from Hickory Ridge to Ranger Ridge. I can show you on the, you know, the plan, but there's really no other than that one blurb that came out that we went for the grant and all that kind of stuff. So if that's a possibility. And then the last thing that was as the mayor mentioned, the fiftieth, uh Jim, your crew, um you guys hit it out the park. It was very well attended and compliments. I didn't hear one bad word, you know, a- and I shared, I went live that night with the drone and I think my live hit something like three points, six, three hundred, three, thirty-six hundred rather, folks in a period of a day. So folks were just kind of, I know you, y'all probably thought you could tweak it a little bit better, but I want you to know it it rocked. So thank you guys.
What, appreciate that, and a few of these I can, I can answer now, so I don't, I don't want to keep you a month. But uh the, you had mentioned those, the signs with uh Captain Meesmer, the the flashing signs versus others. And you know, you said, you know, it wouldn't hurt, uh but I think you heard him say it wouldn't help either, right? But we are working on some other signs that just have better technology, um and there's other ways to grab that and and uh make sure that we're getting more of a stealth uh reading out there. A- a- at the end of the day, we, you can't really engineer out all the speeding. And that really what you hear people complain about, I think mostly are the anomalies. It isn't that eighty-five percent of the people are going fast, it's what do we do about the fifteen? And and that's where, you know, I think the the enforcement comes into place. And, you know, we'll work with Sheriff's Department on kind of playing whack-a-ball. It's just as, you know, as we grow, those resources are needed, those, you know, just boots on the ground literally are needed in order to go out and catch them on autumn and then run out the whole thing and catch them out there and then get over to Stallings and slow them down there and you just, um we can put all the signs and speed bumps and other things that you want. Um when when there's no enforcement or if we have no ability to enforce or they know that that sign isn't, you know, catching their picture or something, they go right back to the to the speeding, so um but we are working on some sign stuff. Uh the speed bumps that Charlotte does, that is a standard that I see um throughout the state. You know, you'll see them, you know, all over the place. What they do is they break it into three segments and the center segment is uh we've got a wheel path in it. And that wheel path is a little wider and and that way the the fire trucks and EMS and everybody can go through. Um but the other folks can go through is me and my F one fifty. So when I take my son to school in the morning and drive down the middle because I don't, I don't want to go fifteen over and I want to go twenty-five. So and everybody else does too and they and they figure that out. And then what you end up having is people going the same speed they were before, especially people that like to speed, right? Um and then they're going left of center, down the center of the road every time they get to it. Or they go to the right and they go to the grass a little bit. So then we get people asking us to put big stones or bollards or something that'll kill somebody in the side of the road, which obviously we're not allowed to do. Um so again, I think you can't engineer out the the fifteen percent or the five percent. Um at some point, you have to, you know, invest in that law enforcement presence, move them around um and make sure that the the anomalies are kind of learning a lesson because most of the people are generally um following that. But we can look into see, you know, where there are traffic calming measures that we can place if if you send people specifically out to us. Um and then uh you know, the website feature, I I could feel uh, you know, Lee's eyes burning into me over here because this is something we're working on. Um but this website remains elusive as we continue to just beta test, beta test, beta test. Uh but that is something that that we will have on there is, you know, a feature or a place for projects that are easily you can go to and they kind of interlink with each other. So if you go and find a greenway project, you can go back and see, is this part of a rezoning? Is this a grant fund? How much does it cost? What the plans look like, when's the completion date? You just have that really, you know, user friendly version. You know, I think one of the things uh and I'll uh foreshadow this for you. Um I haven't gotten this request from my staff officially yet, but uh I I would imagine like the other years, they're going to pitch to me that we need a G I S specialist in order to uh stay up to date on that type of graphics and maintain that section of the website. And if you saw Zach nodding and Mallory nodding, uh I think uh you'll you'll see that. So um again, more resources, more user friendly, all things that that we're working on, but uh point taken. And um a lot, you didn't ask this, but in my uh my moment of uh getting choked up to congratulate uh um everybody except for you two, I took the two that were staying around um for granted a little bit. Congratulations on uh your reelection, Councilman Smith, your third term and second term, Councilman Dellinger. Um certainly hard work, um both in an election and in capacity up here. And uh Ron's already shown me by listing me eight things uh right away to to hop on, so congratulations, gentlemen.
And I'll just, before I forget, also throw thanks to Mallory. I know over the last month, I believe I've thrown her two folks, it's kind of cold and didn't give her much story behind the scenes. Just kind of hey, here, handle this and without issue, as expected, she always jumps in, takes care of them and I just appreciate it, she's very quick, her team is very quick to get out and talk to these folks, so it just means a lot, so thank you.
She's a good mentor here at this, out of Harrisburg. Take credit for Lee, you, name it.
Thank you, Ron, any other council comments this evening?
So I have a laundry, you figured that way, but you will go ahead again.
Well, I'll be quick, um you mentioned Veterans Park, um and since Veterans Day just passed, thank you for all those who've served, by the way. Um and I didn't want to interrupt Rob's suspiciously kind remarks. Um but I've had a lot of veterans say, you know, the the seals that are in the walkway might be a little um what's the word I'm looking for?
Disrespectful.
Disrespectful.
Because you can walk on them.
Have plans to do that, you might want to pull those up and get them up vertically so that you're not walking on them.
And thank you for that, we we haven't heard that and we do have some complaints.
Yes, okay, that's all I have.
That's what, yeah, we heard, we just heard, we heard that.
Well, as a veteran, I'll say it.
To walk across it, yeah.
So thank you to public safety um and parking wrecks for the fiftieth. I was really amazed, I thought the traffic was really going to be a problem, but it wasn't. And so it, like the mayor said, it really seemed like small hometown feel and everyone enjoyed it. So thank you so much, that was a perfect way to to celebrate. Uh moving along, it is, it was that season, I've already sent like three things for Rob to do due to finding out stuff in reelection. So I'll not mention those, I know Mallory's and Mary are probably on a couple of those. Um other things that have come up is Hickory Ridge paving. It's like, I I know it's state and somebody's already mentioned who's going to pay for my alignment, but any comments from the town manager or Mallory about how they really did not make it smooth and there were so many bumps across all of Rocky River and all of Hickory Ridge? Any comments?
I feel like I'm wearing out my welcome talking about uh N C D O T, but I'll I'll allow Mallory to make any comments if she has any. But uh I think uh, you know, they're paving projects or
Yeah.
Are there paving projects?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is I've reached out around a couple of times to get that update on that and I failed to get it. Um I just talked tomorrow, but I'm suddenly mailing out some prep for paving, they haven't done the finisher servicing yet, so it's temporary.
But there's so many drastic bumps, I mean, you know, do we know when it'll be through?
A million dollar question.
Okay, all right, so that's one thing. Um harmony, so one region resident reached out and because it hasn't rained, they want to know, is there anything about all the construction and the dust over there? Can can the developer wet it down to keep some of that dust? Because they have C P I and it's really like aggravating them. But it it is, I mean, if you look down Stallings, it's kind of dusty, right? So is there anything that's required of the developer there? Um also, one of the previous sustainability people reached out and said, any people that have pumpkins that they want to recycle or anybody that has campaign signs that they want to recycle, that he has a perfect place to put those and that is Ken Houston, he will be glad to pick them up. So if you got any of that, that needs to be recycled for compost, just get in touch to one of us and we can reach out to you. Um the traffic signal at Hickory Ridge and Stallings, I read on the website, it'll be January before it actually is up and running. But I know we had talked one time, Rob, about double turn lanes onto Veteran, is that still a possibility? Will that help? Will that, or do we feel like the traffic light is really going to assist?
You want me to answer now?
Sure.
Uh I think it's a possibility, um N T D O T is is looking at the left turns
Okay.
out there, but I, my understanding is they won't look at them until you have the full install and see what the operations are out there and then um then they will get, you know, some type of pattern change
Okay.
after that.
All right, I also learned about something, I haven't brought this up to you, is that we have a trailer park that's that we furnish them water and we furnish them a commercial ring. And um this was an attorney that reached out at one of the meetings I was at this past month and just thought that that was kind of unclear, so I just wanted to give you a heads up and is there any comment? And I don't, it didn't give me the trailer park name and I couldn't figure out which trailer park it was.
We we don't have a trailer park that that we charge commercial. We 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 have a master meter that goes into a trailer park and that's not in the town.
And that's probably what it's
So we provide bulk water to that park and that park resells the water to their residents. So we sell them bulk water at outside rates to a commercial entity who resells it, which is what we do with every commercial entity that we sell to
Okay.
in the town, and we've talked to that attorney and we've we've explained this to the residents. We explained it to them before we put the master meter in because this only happened, you know, three or four years ago.
Yep.
Um and so they wanted to go to our water. Um so, okay, this is the scenario, they agreed and now they don't.
Thank you, okay. Um also last year, and we've been invited again this year, um Christmas Angels and for Cabarrus County, they have their um Christmas party on December the ninth at Harrisburg Methodist. It's one to four council and the mayor is invited. Um they give gifts to the underprivileged in Cabarrus County and they have to follow. So just wanted to extend that to uh council that were again invited. It's December the ninth on a Saturday, one to four, I think they have food and uh we don't have to stay the whole time. That may be, yeah.
Any other council comments this evening? Okay, with that, we will move into one of two public hearings tonight. Zach will come up and review the U D O text amendment expanding the separation requirements for tobacco stores, vape shops and the retail sale of C B D and hemp based products and electronic gaming establishments, it's really long.
Very long, and I'm I'm very excited to be in this beautiful new setting, thanks to uh Public Works for making it look so bougie. It's uh my favorite color, blue. Um so yes, we have a public hearing to um consider expanding the separation requirements uh between tobacco stores, vape shops, retail sales, C B D and hemp based products, electronic gaming establishments from each other and certain other uses. And again, this will um essentially introduce some uniformity uh across our ordinance. Right now, there's some differences between those, it would uh increase the requirement from fifteen hundred to two thousand feet. I'll explain a little bit more uh what uh will be consistent. Um essentially, uh the purpose is to make sure that these uses are located appropriately in relationship to each other and certain other land uses that may be negatively impacted. Uh staff recommendation is to approve uh text amendment twenty twenty-three oh three and to adopt a statement of consistency. So in March of this year, uh town council approved the text amendment which required that tobacco stores and vapor shops and the sale of C B D and hemp based products be separated from each other in the following uses by fifteen hundred feet. Residential use property, religious institution, public, private schools, cemeteries, public parks, daycare use. Uh prior to that, um there was no separation requirement. Text amendment also uh established definitions for C B D and hemp based products. The Planning and Zoning Board uh met October seventeen, considered the text amendment and were supportive. Um they just asked us to clean up the language to make it clear uh Separation requirements for these uses would apply to each other. As well as like uses and other uses. So it's kind of a, a three-way, a triangle of, so as an example, if you've got a tobacco and vapor shop. You could not have another one within two thousand feet of another like shop or a shop that would sell CBD or hemp based products. Or electronic gaming establishment or from the other uses that were noted. So it cleans that up and, and makes that clear. The essentially, again, this, this amendment is bringing into consistency. All the uses that were mentioned, along with adult use establishes, currently two thousand feet separation requirement. And again, from all the uses that were previously noted. So we have consistent separation requirement across the board for all those uses. And you can see the, this is just the, the text itself. We've made it clear internally for each use. That the separation is for that use and the other uses and from other potentially affected uses. And so that is the case now for all three. And this gives you a graphic illustration. I showed this back in, in, in March. This has increased down to two thousand feet. And you can see that within, this is taking a location from the vapor shop that was approved. Back in March or February, rather. And that two thousand foot radius does stretch. And you can see all the different uses there from church to daycare to. Park, school, and so that's, we, we now have that ability to regulate those. The land use in terms of consistency recommends opportunities to improve the overall appearance of Harrisburg. Which is always our goal. One of the specific recommendations is to approve the appearance of the NC forty-nine corridor. The amendments will ensure consistency within the UDL for similar uses that require, these all require specialty use permits. And so staff is, our opinion is that this is consistent with the Harrisburg area land use plan. And so the action requested this evening is to hold a public hearing and consider adoption of text amendment twenty twenty-three oh three. Recommendation of staff is to approve as well as the, along with the endorsement of planning and zoning. And then make required findings, the amendments consistent with the criteria of the U D O and the land use plan. And so I will just leave that up there. If I go to the next slide that will say questions. But I figured I'll just park here because it has the appropriate motion consistency statement. So any questions, I would.
Are there any questions before we open it up for public comment?
So let me just make sure if an ABC store wants to come to Harrisburg. Where can it be located on highway forty-nine?
An ABC store. Yeah, this would not regulate the ABCs.
At all.
Rob, I don't know that we have jurisdiction.
We don't have a board established.
The, the regulations with the ABC store and all the, it was never a good deal for this town. So it's, it's come up before, but. Okay.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person first before seeing if there's anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak. We did have a sign up located outside of council chambers. There was no one that signed up. But if there is anybody in person that would like to speak during the public comments of this section, please raise your hand. Okay, with no one in council chambers, is there anyone joining us via Zoom that would like to speak during public comment? No. This concludes public comment. Are there any formal comments from council before we move for the motion? I think this answered all the discussion that we had from the last meeting to kind of tighten that up. So thank you guys for doing that.
Motion to approve the statement.
There is a motion to approve on the floor. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. We also do have a consistency statement based on the staff report and staff presentation. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the objective. The Harrisburg area land use plan, which recommends the town improve the appearance of North Carolina forty-nine corridor. And it's reasonable and in the public interest. Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our second public hearing of this evening, I believe Mallory is joining us. And this is going to be consideration of the town's water shortage response plan update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's right. Tonight I'm presenting on the water shortage response plan update. So let everybody know we are not in a water shortage. This is just a plan that we update every five years. The last update was in two thousand eighteen. This plan describes how the town responds to water shortages and what would trigger one. And it defines the water use restrictions and enforcement actions on those imposed restrictions. So when a water supply threshold is, is reached, a, or the trigger for the water shortage. A declaration is provided by the mayor. And then we would release press releases to Charlotte Observer, Independent Tribune, and then any other media outlets that we needed to share it to. We would mirror the water shortage response plan enacted by the city of Concord and Charlotte Mecklenburg Utilities. And then enact our own water shortage response plan. This is a brief overview of the three phases of the water shortage response plan. Each phase is a minimum of thirty days. At the initiation of phase one, the mayor would declare a water shortage advisory. That would happen if water levels drop below, twenty percent below normal. Water conservation tips would be distributed. Voluntary conservation would be requested. And we would request our commercial and industrial customers to prepare twenty-five percent water use reduction plans within thirty days. Phase two would be triggered by severe drought, water levels forty percent below normal. And the mayor would declare a water shortage alert. All restrictions from phase one plus twenty-five percent reduction would be put into place. Non-commercial car washing, residential lawn irrigation will be restricted to two days per week and during non-peak hours. And non-commercial pressure washing and filling of pools would be banned. If phases one and two were unable to result in a twenty-five percent demand reduction across the system. We would go into phase three emergency reduction and the mayor would declare a water shortage emergency. All ornamental and non-essential potable water uses would be banned, including recreational uses. And there would be higher enforcement penalties for violations. The only changes that we are making to the plan, that's before you for consideration tonight and for the public hearing tonight, is the addition of a public hearing. This is something the state has required of us. So we're holding the public hearing and it was advertised through the proper process. We've also added a variance policy, which could be considered for economic hardship or for public health reasons. The variances would be submitted to me and I would present those to you, council. And then you would issue a ruling on that variance. There are no other changes proposed to the plan. Mayor, if.
Sorry.
Would like to, we can open a public hearing.
Are there any questions from council before we open it up to public hearing? At this time, we'll open the public hearing goes to those here in person. We did have a sign up outside of council chambers. No one signed up. But if there is anyone in council chambers that would like to speak, please raise your hand. If not, we will go to those online. There is no one online. That concludes public hearing. Are there any formal comments from council before there's a motion on the floor? Was there?
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was saying pretty straightforward.
Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the updated water shortage response plan?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Rich, do we have a consistency statement on this one? Thank you. Thank you so much. We do not have any old business this evening, nor new business. Action items. I had a really long list, but I feel like we checked a lot of that off in conversation. Did I miss anything that we're still?
We did check most of it off. I had.
Hickory Ridge paving.
Had the Hickory Ridge paving to check on, as well as harmony dust control. And then I don't know if it's a necessarily an action item, but a point taken on the Veterans Park seal placement.
Perfect. With that, we do have the legal matter in a property, property acquisition discussion that we need to have in closed session. Is there a motion to move into closed session? Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone. We have returned from closed session and with no further business, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn tonight's meeting? There's a motion. Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried. Good evening.